Each week, local governments and schools make important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts on our community, and quite possibly on you. Yubasutter.live makes it easier for you to know what's going on. We livestream up to four local government meetings every Tuesday, important special meetings, Oliver's Public Utility Districts, Mondays and Thursdays meetings, and town halls. To make it easier for you, we pull out informative sections and present them individually. For your information, our new series that posts Wednesdays right here on Yubasutter.live. Subscribe to our YouTube channel, like and follow our Facebook page so you know when we're live and when we've posted something new. For your information, local government meetings made shorter, posting Wednesdays here on Yubasutter.live. Yubasutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
Thank you to our staff.
Do we have any agenda reorganizations?
No, all good. There's nothing to report from both sessions.
Student reports. Who wants to report? Some more?
So, last week, we had our homecoming week, and as I said last time, we had a Star Wars theme. So, we were able to do an In the Dark Rally, which we've been wanting to do for a couple of years now. We were able to hand out glow sticks and had a couple rally games and like the crowning and all that. We had our Career Fair on that same day, so it was a busy day. And then, our football team also won our homecoming game. And then, our dance, we were happy that had over 300 people. We were happy with the attendance for that day. And then, for volleyball, we had our senior night last Thursday against Placer, and they're playing right now for the playoffs against Oakdale. And then, we wanted to take a moment to recognize Alexa Campos, who's broken three of the setting records for volleyball, and also the first player in RV history to break 1,000 career assists. And then, tennis senior night also happened last Thursday, and they have a playoff game next Monday. And Valeria Ramirez was also a league finalist and is going to sections for the fourth year in a row. And then, for upcoming events, we have football senior night on the 30th and Fall Festival on Halloween.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For Yuba City, we just wrapped up our homecoming. We also wrapped up some of our senior night sections for volleyball. I did want to talk about, a little bit about some issues we're having. Our sound system at the school is getting a little bit old, so it's kind of hard to hear us during our rallies and other presentations we have. I'd also like to advocate a little bit for our culinary teacher. A few years ago, it used to be a class where you had to have a good record to get in, and now our counselors are being more lenient on it, so now anyone's getting in. And she's having a lot of difficulties with kids who don't behave very well in the class. So, I would like to ask if we could bring that system back for her. There's kids who, I guess, shouldn't be in the class, that are in the class, who aren't following safety rules. She's also having some budget problems as she's only allowed to shop at Food Max now. And, I mean, it's pretty hard to buy groceries for five classes worth of kids who are cooking once a week, maybe even twice a week, and you can only go to one store. As well as, her advanced class, I would like to ask if she could get a double period. RV obviously has an hour and a half for classes, we only have about 50 minutes, and on minimum days, we only have 40 minutes, and that's not a lot of time to cook anything. So, she's very, um... She's kind of blocked up on what we can cook. Sometimes we have to repeat recipes. So, at least for her advanced class, it would be appreciated if she could get a double period. Upcoming events, we do have our senior night for football. We just wrapped up our senior night for volleyball. Wrestling season is coming up, and that's it.
Employee recognition?
All right, tonight, we actually have from two different presenters presenting employees who go above and beyond in helping with the culture here at UC Unified. First, we have our Director of Children's Center, Pam Obershon.
Hi, good evening, board members and members of our community and the audience. Tonight, I have the absolute pleasure of recognizing someone who truly keeps our program running smoothly and keeps us smiling and partying and having fun along the way. And it is our incredible CDP office specialist, Kimberly Taylor. Kim is one of those people who seem to have endless energy. Her entire family's here, do you agree with me?
Yeah.
She makes sure every child in every family gets the support they need. When anyone walks in our office, she is the first one to smile in a cheery voice. "Hi, can I help you? Is there anything I can do?" And she means it. Sometimes, walking into the office, the first impression can make or break the relationship you have with that family. And she is our first line of greeting our parents, and they absolutely adore her for it, as do we. Kim goes above and beyond for our families. She meets with them, and she finds community resources for them. Diapers, bus vouchers for folks who do not have vehicles, clothes. She does community outreach. She is vital and helps with our parent engagement, born learning, parent training series that we have two times a year for six weeks in a row. She keeps all of our staff in the loom, highly organized, and makes sure that no child or family slips through the cracks. It's easy to offer help, it's more challenging to follow up and make sure that help was provided, and if not, find other avenues to do so. Her warmth, humor, and professionalism set the tone for our entire program. She treats everyone like they're the most important person, and she means it. She is also our party planner. Do you know that there is a day called National Kimberly Day? Well, if you don't celebrate it and you hang out with Kim, you very well, well... We thought it was ridiculous to start celebrating one day, and now it's turned into almost an entire National Kimberly Week. So, she brings a lot to our program. Every birthday is recognized, every holiday, she decorates, she's just super positive, great person to have around, great employee, and is a wonderful, wonderful advocate for our families. So, please join me to celebrate Kimberly Taylor, a hardworking, fun, amazing employee for our community. Let's take a minute and roll tree, and then I need to get a picture.
Oh, better than that one.
Oh, look at the photographer, you know. Yes, it's better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Kim.
And up next, from Linkcrest, we have Principal Sarah Nowinski.
Hello, everybody. This is Michelle Cummings. Oh, see, they have a picture. I asked her, "Do they have a picture of you?", she's like, "I hope not." Secret, secret stash. So, I actually have known Michelle since I was a teacher. I first met her because she was a parent of a student in my class. Her son was in my English class at Yuba City High School, probably 25 years ago or so. And so, I've known her since then, and then I reconnected with Michelle. She was an instructional aide in a special day class at King Avenue when I was the principal there. And then, I moved to Linkcrest, and there was Michelle. And she was our education specialist at Linkcrest. So, I've been with Michelle for 10 years at Linkcrest, and she's really been kind of like our staple in our special ed support program. And I'll read in a minute what I wrote, but just, I just can't say enough about how supportive she is. Like, even tonight, we were emailing about a student until we got here. And, just, she just never stops. She really just truly, truly deeply cares. And I know that I can go to her for anything, and it will be done and followed through upon. And she has mentored a ton of new teachers at our school, new special ed teachers. She always is coaching them and, you know, kind of showing them the ropes, but also being a very supportive, caring, kind of, you know, almost a mom sometimes to some of them, you know, because they, "We're getting older." And, so yeah, so I am just very excited to be here, and she has a whole group in the audience as well. And I thought that would be neat to see as well. So, all right. So, what I wrote was, "Michelle works tirelessly to ensure that the needs of special education students at Linkcrest are met. She is a partner with her colleagues, families, and administration. There is absolutely never a time when Michelle says, 'No', or 'I can't.' She will do anything in her power to bridge relationships between staff and goes way above and beyond her call. She is an honest and caring person and a wonderful person as well. She has built lifelong relationships with many students, families, and colleagues. Michelle embodies what it means to give all students the opportunity to learn and be successful." And that's all true, plus a lot more. So, thank you, and thank you.
That's a cute picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports and information, child development programs will showcase.
Thank you. So, tonight, we have new Director Flan Shires here, and so she is going to be showcasing our child development program in District White. So, Pam?
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk about what I consider the best kept secret in Yuba City Unified, and that is our child development programs. We've been around a long, long time, and we are constantly running into families that'll say, "Gosh, I didn't even know you had a program. I wish I knew this when my kids were in preschool." So, I am very grateful for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about our program. We are unique, we are quality, and we are a great resource for families, and we are free. So, our program is income-eligible. We offer free preschool part-day, and we offer a sliding scale fee for full-day. Currently, out of our 60 families in full-day, only two pay a fee, and both those fees are under $90. This is our main campus. We have six classrooms on this campus. This is located inside Richland Housing. Three of the classrooms are full-day, full-day, full-year. We're open 257 days from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And then, on this campus, we have three part-day classrooms, six sessions, so a.m. and p.m. with three classrooms. One of those classrooms is an inclusion class, where we have special day students from Yuba City Unified working and in the same class as our gen ed students. In addition, we also have our off-site preschool locations. We have another inclusion site at Berry, excuse me, Tuahdeh Cave, Lincoln Park, King, Tuahdeh Berlin, and Bridge. Those are all part-day, the ones off-site. So, here are some pictures. You'll see the gal on the left, it's all about the process, not the product. We get messy, we explore, we have a great time, and we learn through play. Put out a couple primary colors and just tell kids to create what you want. And then, the picture on the right is definitely our logo, discovering the joy in learning. Look at that face, it just, there's nothing better. To let you know that California is the fourth most expensive childcare state in the United States, okay? Palm, Masherton, D.C. being first, but we are fourth. Childcare in California now costs more than college tuition at CSU universities. When we're thinking about having a family, we're stressing about how are we going to get them through college? And little did we know, we have preschool and daycare coming up very soon, and it's going to be much more expensive. Preschool cost range, $700 to $2,600 per month, that's part-day. And full-day, another program we offer, is $8,300 to $31,200 per year. Again, our program offers this for free. These private daycares and other daycares, they're not, they may be licensed, but they're not required through CDE to have additional ECE units or additional accountability factors, whereas our program does. We are income-eligible, so some people feel like, "Gosh, maybe I'll make too much and I won't qualify." CDE has understand, understands that people need childcare. And so, they've been much more liberal with their gross monthly income ceilings. For a family size of two, they could have a gross income of $8,071 and still get into our program. At your desk there, I have a postcard that breaks down the family sizes from two to eight. If you have anyone that you think you know that might be in that income category, have them give us a call. You'll also learn that there are other ways to get in our program, even if you exceed this income ceiling. Our part-day enrollment, I won't go over a lot of this, but we are 100% income-based, and we serve children who are CPS, at-risk, foster, and homeless first, no matter what they're in. First priority. Then, we enroll students with exceptional needs who are meeting the income. And then, we go down the list from lowest income to family income. If the family income make more than the income threshold, we will accept them if they are 15% above that income threshold, as long as students in categories one, two, and three have already been placed. Then, if they are an FRPM school, which is free or reduced price meal school, according to our nutritional services at CSPP, those are the schools who qualify. If families are over income, yet they live in those attendance areas, not inter-district transfer, but truly live in those attendance areas, we can also accept them as well. So, even if our families are over income, they can get into our program. We have to, every year, set aside 5% of seats for students with disabilities. We cannot offer that to anyone except students who are on IEPs. Right now, we currently have filled that easily, two times over, in fact. Full-day enrollment, same, same process. The only difference is in full-day, you have to show that there is a need. A need is, "Then I work, and so I need someone to watch my child. I'm going to school, and I need someone to watch my child. I'm seeking work, and so I need childcare." Or, "I worked a graveyard shift, and when I come home from work, my child's getting up, and so I need childcare for my child, so I can rest." Same criteria, just they have to prove a need. State preschool part-day, no need, just qualify. We know the need and the importance of preschool. Our goals, we have four goals that we focus on in CDP. One is for the family, one goal is for the child, one goal is for our community, and the last goal is for ourselves. And so, our family goal is to continue to build family engagement and building relationships. This is fairly easy for us. We are in an advantage where every parent has to physically walk their child in and sign them into the classroom and walk to pick them up. So, we have the opportunity to engage with every parent two times daily. So, we have very strong relationships with our families, and we build on that and have a lot of engagement activities. I know we've invited Doreen to some, we have some great turnout at our family events, and it's because we have the opportunity to build that relationship. The child goal, we have child-centered learning and discovery. In every single one of our preschool programs, our children have one hour of student-choice play. And that may sound like just play, but it's not. It's structured, it's learning to take turns, it's problem-solving, it's sharing. It's, "I want to go to the dramatic play area, and I'm only allowed to have four people in there, and there's four people right now, I'll have to wait my turn, I'll have to come back." Children learn through play. It is age-appropriate for three- and four-year-olds, and they truly love it, and they learn a lot of great problem-solving and social, emotional skills. We also focus on our community. We have a very diverse community, and we're proud of that. And I also hire staff that reflects the students and the communities in which we serve. We have, many of our staff are multilingual, and they're a wonderful addition to our staff and our community, and we're proud to continue to represent all members of our community to ensure that everyone feels welcome in our program. And the last one is for us, the employee-work-life balance. Asking my staff to not text about work, you know, after work hours, shut off the email, you know, just have a life. It'll be waiting there tomorrow, it'll be waiting there the next day. So, it's really been a huge focus for our program this year, because it's important. We have the most important job in the world, and if we're tired, exhausted, or burned out, we're just not going to be the wonderful employees that I know we are. Here are some pictures of our kiddos, some dramatic play here, we've got a little team party going on. And here are some of our parents, King Avenue parents, at our parent advisory council. We seek meetings with parents to get their feedback on how we can improve their, our program, give them updates about what we're doing, and our attendance wasn't that great. It was very difficult to get families out. So, now, this was our back-to-school parent advisory. We had about, gosh, I'd say about over 90% participation rate across the district. And what it was, is we bought birthday crowns and alphabet letters, and we said, "Your child's going to be selling a birthday, celebrating a birthday with us, and so, this will be your surprise for your child, we'll collect them." And so, the parents had a great time, they interacted, a lot of these moms didn't know each other. They got to know each other by saying, "Does anyone have any extra Es? I needed an A. I'm looking for a yellow L." So, it was a great opportunity, and any parent who was not able to make it, they had a secret Megan Take Bag that was given to them, and they did it at home and returned it. So, every single child has a personalized crown from their parents on their birthday, which I think is really cool. Our enrollment data, currently, we can serve and we're licensed for about 650 students, and we're down. And part of the reason we're down, it's no big secret, is TK. When you only enroll three- and four-year-olds and you lose your four-year-olds, obviously, it's going to be harder to fill the seats. Also, historically, we were almost predominantly four-year-olds, because back in the day, four-year-olds got priority over three-year-olds. So, now that we're enrolling more three-year-olds, some of our parents are thinking, "Boy, three, that's a little too young, and we're not ready yet." So, I think in time, as TK becomes more the norm and more known about, that we'll get more three-year-olds enrolled. that we'll get more three-year-olds enrolled. At least, I certainly hope so, because that gives them one full year with us, and then they can make a decision if they want to go onto TK, or they're welcome to stay with us. But we can work on those social-emotional skills, they can have time to play, we can work on the toilet training, we do all of that in our program to help prepare them for TK and beyond. Certified staff, 18, classified staff, 58. Again, our program spans from Berry to Aprilane, and I have a.m. and p.m. staff, as well as 184-day staff and 257. Low socioeconomic, it's 99%, probably higher. If you are a foster parent, we do not look at the foster parent's income, only the child's income, that foster family receives from the state, which automatically gets them in our category. So we are pretty much 100% low socioeconomic. Over 50% of dual-language learners, foster youth, we're sitting at 1/2%. And students with disabilities, CDE requires that we have 5.4. And currently, when this data was pulled about two weeks ago, we are at 11.4. So we are more than double what's required of us from the state at this time. Every year, we're required to do a parent survey for CDE for our program's self-evaluation. This is the 24-25 survey. And we have 99.8% of our parents state that their children are happy in our program, and 100% parents state that their children feel safe in our program. This was an online anonymous survey that was taken and completed by a lot of our staff members and translated, or parents, excuse me, and translated. I know it's a cliche, but we are a family in our program. On the left is a teacher who had to retire suddenly, and she was feeling better and back to herself. And so we literally rolled out the red carpet for her. And to see that many of our staff members out there to support her, knowing that we span many campuses across the district and many different work hours, yet we all came out to support her for the little garden we dedicated at Bernard, and her, celebrating her. On the right, we have some River Valley students, ECE students, who love to come and visit our campus every year and play with the littles. All these fine folks have desires to be in the ECE world, and so once they're 18 and graduated, I told them, please, please give us a call. Some highlights and celebrations, we are a district-wide quality preschool program. We're now serving more three-year-olds, so that's exciting and different. Every year, we have highly-rated annual parent surveys. We serve two inclusion preschool classroom sites, four sessions with a.m. and p.m. We have family engagement activities through the year that are highly intended because of those relationships we're able to have. When the busing shortage happened, obviously preschool wouldn't be a priority for field trips, and it's very hard having a.m. and p.m., you know, going to the same site two times. So we contract with the Plazium, and they bring the field trips to us. So every child gets to experience the field trip experience without the busing hassles. We have the parent advisory meetings, three, four times a year, with the hands-on activities to boost attendance. A ton of cultural events, we do community outreach to serve families in need, and we have to follow through, that is part of our obligation and responsibilities for getting our funding through CDE. And we have happy, loyal staff. I'm proud to report that for the third year in a row, we were voted in the top three of America Best of Favorite Childcare for 2025. It's quite an honor for us, there's a lot of great daycares in the Tri-County area. And to be recognized three years in a row is just an absolute honor, and we are very proud. And hopefully, we'll be selected again next year. Just some fun pictures, what preschool should be all about, just exploring and fun, mommy-me tea time. We have quality instruction, we actually get rated. We have people come in and rate how we engage and interact with students. Are we using positive language? Are we asking open-ended questions? Are we giving them attention? Are we giving attention to all students? Not just us as teachers, but our aides, everyone in the room. And then we sit down with the people rating us, and we talk about what they observed. I'm pulling our head teacher, Tammy Sanders, if you know her, she's fantastic. Every Thursday, she's doing coaching as needed for our staff and students. We have the Komochi social-emotional curriculum we adopted, and the creative curriculum, because it is geared a lot more towards three-year-olds, and so it's more appropriate for the clientele age that we're serving and the kiddos. We have a great relationship with Childcare Planning Council. We have onsite coaching monthly throughout the year. There's not a single staff member who does not get monthly coaching in our program. And every classroom has full circles, small group activities, and student-choice play daily. Got some great photos here, the one with Santa, we just happen to be our director of HR, Mr. Eric Jenkins, just thought I'd throw that out, he was a really great sport for coming into our program. And that's what we do, we make it magical for the kids. These are some of the partnerships that we have, I'll have you take a look. I'm very proud about being an ongoing partner with the United Way. We offer parenting classes, six weeks, and we do it twice a year, and I think we've done eight or nine sessions now, where we train parents in the United Way curriculum, how to interact and engage with children ages zero to five, free or low-cost. It's a fantastic program, we provide the families dinner, free childcare and incentives, and they go home and they interact and do the activities with their kids, so it's fantastic. We get rated on how much quality we have in our program. Highest rating is a five through the state of California, CDE, and every single one of our programs rate at a four or five. Our partners at Southern County Children and Families Commission, we have a parent advisory, we do a lot of PDs, so we're very grateful for our partners. In addition to the YCEF, they do a lot for us, and of course, our partners here, preschool intervention program. Here's an amazing night, last night, or last year, and Ms. Osumi had the pleasure of joining us. And it was with KCRA Latina author and anchor, Letitia Ordaz, award-winning author. And look at that crowd, it was standing room only. We were able to purchase books for a ton of people, she spoke very motivational, local in Sacramento, so that was a great night. And then, areas for refinement, focus, and growth, we just really need to get used to working with three-year-olds, you know? Maybe only a year difference, but when you've only lived four years, 25% difference in age is quite significant. We need to learn the new assessments that are being put on our preschool staff, because they've adopted some new ones, so we're just, we're used to the old versions and old ways, and so we'll get trained on that. And just additional, children with special needs professional development. Like our peers in the TK-12, we are seeing more students with children with special needs in our classrooms. And then, our preschool data is moving more and more towards CAPSTAT-type data. So the software that we're using is very early childhood-friendly, and as the state of California is asking for more data, parent income, parent education, all those things that our TK-12 folks fill out in enrollment forms, we're moving to that model. So we need to really focus and try to find a database or areas in which we can start recording that data for the state. And how can you best support us in our program? We were asked, is just, please share our information with families that you feel might meet our criteria. Thank you for the support, and know that our funding and regulations are different than TK-12. We're not part of the YLCAP, we're not part of UBS City Unified's budget. We have our own separate budgeting through CDE, and we are ruled by community care licensing. We are licensed daycare, in addition to Title V through CDE, working with LEAs. So we have a unique union between those two regulations. Please come visit us anytime, if you're ever on a hard day, we can make it better in five seconds flat. And please continue to support our staff to receive ongoing staff development opportunities. Again, I want to thank you for your support, your patience when I share about our program. Please don't hesitate to come see us, and if you have any questions, I'm open. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to tell you, I've known a couple of families whose children have gone through your program, and they cannot do anything besides rave about what an amazing and wonderful opportunity it was for their kids. So I thank you, you guys do great work.
Thank you, thank you for the compliment and the opportunity and honor to work with children, you know? We truly enjoy what we do.
I love the birthday crown thing, I'm just like, heck, like, all the principals need to get on there. I mean, you know, come on, guys, if you have like, your parent give you like, for your birthday, right?
Even high school students in law would like a birthday crown.
Yes, maybe not a crown, a little like, how cool is that? Like a letter for something from your parent at your school, like, that's rad.
Thank you. Thanks again, everyone, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much, too.
The YCSC health insurance study.
Yes, so at the last staff board meeting, it was requested for us to give just an update regarding where we are in the process of our health. Here, health insurance study, so I'm going to turn it over to Scott, who will just give where we are in the process and timeline.
Yeah, it's not much of an update quite yet, but just to remind everybody that we have partnered with Southern County Superior Junior Schools and engaged with our partners to do a review of our health benefits for the CSDA and a part of the UBS City Unified. And we're at the stage, actually, next week, where we're meeting and discussing the results of the study. And so we will know more soon. But, and part of this, we actually have a committee made up of union, our union members as well, so we kind of really just really get an understanding of what's going on with the health benefits. So we'll know more soon. That's it.
President Nomi was specifically interested in the timeline for notification, if in fact we were withdrawing from our partners. And so that would be at December 30th timeline, that we would notify if we were going to. But there's been no decisions in the board that involve along with our unions regarding any decisions that are made, but there is the December 30th timeline.
Thank you. YCSC staffing analysis.
Yes, so again, there was a request for information, I believe it was as a result of the conversations regarding an audit production on the 55%. So Scott will talk again about the 55%, and then Jordan will talk about the analysis that was done regarding staffing trends over the past few years.
So for this, I printed out just a very simple white piece of paper that's called the current expense formula, I put that in front of you, that is it. And so, yeah, I know, it's not terribly fancy, it's just influential. But this just kind of gives you the details of actually what is in this formula. So as a requirement by California Department of Education, we're required to make basically 55% of our expenditures need to be cash flow compensation. That includes in the numerator, it's really teachers and instructional aides, salaries, salaries and benefits, and the denominator is every other expense that's in our general fund, not funds like child development and other areas. And I just listed out some of the exceptions to that. See, all expenditures except food service, facilities acquisition, construction, transportation, non-public school expenditures, expenditures made with lottery resources. And then every year, there are certain exclusions, and excluded resources, so basically a special program. And in the 24-25 school year, that included special ed, mental health, after-school educational safety, ACES, and then basically our agricultural vocational education system. So that is what the system is, it kind of generally is what the formula is. And then we have, Jordan has some additional information on the staffing in these areas.
So as we've already shared, this is a follow-up, some of the information that was requested. We do want to talk to you a little bit about the data sources that were used to compile this report. Our student enrollment numbers are coming from our ARI system. Our employee records are coming from two different databases. One is obsolete for those earlier years, 15, 16, 17, 18. So there is some limited access maneuverability within that database. And then Escape, which we are currently using for the 18, 19, 25, 26 school year. There are, of course, changes to that data over time. Positions change names, we've had some positions move from classified to certified. And so we've done our best to bring the apples and the oranges as close together as possible. We presented this data and a snapshot, and we have also looked at certain staffing categories as we present this, so that we can really capture the employees that are providing services directly to students and those that are providing services in support of district operations. This is the enrollment data that we are looking at, a 100% change over time from 2015, 16 to current. And then a little about the data categories that you'll see in our staffing. Certified instruction is going to represent our classroom teachers. Certified student support are going to be positions like our counselors, psychologists. SLPs are nurses, there's instructional coach data in there, program specialists. You'll see social workers in the parentheses, because that is specifically a position category that did move from classified to certified over the course of that data range. And then our site admin category is going to include our principals and our assistant principals. We're going to look at classified instructional support, our parent educators, including our special education parent educators, ELOP and those in TK. Classified student support has a wide range of positions that are included in there. That's going to include parent liaisons, mental health clinicians, staff in the library, health clerks and aides, campus supervisors, all those that you see there. We further broke out site-based clerical, so these are at-the-school sites, admin, secretaries, attendants, clerks, data, enrollment, registrars, those types of positions. And then under classified operations, many, many job types within those, but that is going to include our staff supporting custodial, IT, food services, maintenance, grounds, transportation, and warehouse. And then we were also asked about the staff here at the district office, and so you will see that data presented as classified, confidential, and also the district office admin. Some of the changes and shifts that happen that are to be mindful of over the course of the 10 years that we were looking at. Of course, there are changes to student enrollment over time. That will affect levels at any given point in the data. Special education is driven by student need, and sometimes we will see that go up, even though student enrollment overall may go down. Instructional coaches were returned to classrooms at one point. How we choose to deliver that music delivery model can affect some of those data points. The growth of transitional kindergarten, PE specialists. Our CTE programs are ever-growing and enriching. And then again, the social worker piece that was discussed. For classified, we know that there are certain groups and job positions that may not have existed in 15, 16, that do in today's workforce. Mental health clinicians, parent liaisons, library staff, definitely seeing a change in staffing over time with ELOP, supporting that growth of transitional kindergarten. Again, special education, classified staff is also driven by student need and the change to the social workers. We chose the comparison of 1920 and 2025 because we felt like it was a more reliable dataset from the same Escape database. It also gives us a snapshot of life through COVID and where we are now, because there was definitely some funding, staffing, and service delivery models that were different during that time period. You'll see that we've presented it as some FTE. We know that there are positions that are less than a full FTE. We also are looking at percentage of the overall workforce for the district. It kind of shows you the distribution across our entire workforce. It also helps us take a look at that change in a way that is representative of the different sizes of the groups. When we have one group that may have 650 people in it, another group that may have 10 in it, one of the best ways for us to look at changes to those groups is their overall piece of the workforce or type. And these numbers here, we are going to provide to you in the next slide, the change data and also a graph of their distribution. But you'll see there that we have presented it by those employment categories. So when we compare those two tables here, our change in enrollment over that time period was 590 students, which is a decrease of 4.92% in our student enrollment. There was a similar-sized decrease in our certified instruction, our classroom teachers, that matches that student enrollment decrease. You will see site admin, site-based clerical, operations, classified, and district office reduced as well. During that time period, you will see that there is some increase in the certified student support. During that time period, you will see that there is some increase in the certified student support, a significant increase in the classified instructional support, and an increase in the classified student support. So while there are increases there, you will see that those are all in categories that do directly provide service to students. And then those categories here.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah.
So between 2029 to 2020 to 2025, this, this year, we gained the district office administrator, but that doesn't show up down here. So why isn't the percent change green for them?
Because it is not within the category itself of district office administrator. It's within that category of employees' percentage of the whole workforce. So all of the workforce categories.
And I can go down the line, there's a couple of other discrepancies here where these, this, the previous slide compared to this slide, the numbers don't jive.
Can you help me with the number?
Um, yeah, well, um, district office confidential was eight, it's still eight. District office administration was 18, now it's 19. Of course, that was five years ago, this is now. But it doesn't show, it shows that you've gone down 0.04%.
Because it's, that percentage is not a change in district office admin compared to a change in different district office admin. It is at that period of time, all of those categories made up 100% of the workforce. And of that, district office admin was a certain percentage. Because all of those categories have change in them, their piece of the pie, the overall 100% for that year is the change that's reflected.
I'm not a numbers person, but that does, this still doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I'll just go with it for now.
And then this slide here is a visual representation of that table there. And so what you'll see in the entire bar for 1920 is 100% of the workforce. And each color category is how much of the workforce that category represented. And then in 2025, you'll see how much of the workforce that particular category represented. And so those changes are the percentage changes that you saw in the red and green on the table.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, well, yes, questions. So first of all, thank you for putting this together so thoroughly and cross-sectioning the data in several different ways to show a story. I appreciate that. When I use this, which I imagine is also yours, and then I just fold it over the years that, you know, are not complete datasets, I think, because of the programming, right, from the QSS database that you mentioned previously. So if I throw those out and just send my imperfect, rough penciling, the greatest jump is in the classified instructional support, which went from 85 in 1819, which is when you started using the Escape database, right? Okay, so we can trust those numbers, right? I mean, I think you cross-sectioned it from 1920, which it had gone down. It's actually even more dramatic. In my rough penciling, it looks like a 120% increase, increase in, in six years, right? So with the enrollment going down, right? And, and I would, as I would expect with enrollment decreasing, that of course, certificated instruction would go down. If we don't have students, we don't need the teachers, right? But with the classified instructional support jumping to such, you know, like comparative astronomically, right? To me, if I was drawing a conclusion from this, I would say, well, do we have more students per class? And then also, so we've got more bodies in the room. And then we added, instead of like having two teachers over a class. Now, they're in one teacher's class, but this teacher has a para, a para. And so instead of two classes was certificated, it's, right? Is that, would that be an accurate summary?
I appreciate the question and I see where, where that question is coming from. When we look at our parent educators, there really are several factors. You may have someone who is a one-on-one assistant to someone because that need was determined by the IEP team. You may have, we had a growth in our transitional kindergarten. That means more parent educators staffed at a different ratio. You're also going to be looking at our ELOP paras. That program changed funding structures, changed the way we staffed, we have growth there. So I can't.
So these are for those.
All of those are included.
Programs that are not the, how would I put it? They're like, they're not the, the class.
The regular classrooms.
Their support.
Yeah, it's for all the support IEP programs and.
We have special education pairs.
The certificated, the teachers can't.
Some are specific to a student. Some are specific to.
A program.
Classroom or program structure. Some of our parent educators support CTE classes that are not special education parent educators. And then again, some of those are also driven by those changes in those programs. And so they are all in that category together. But yes, there is a significant increase there and also a significant increase in our classified student support. So not necessarily the paras, but that mental health support, the parent liaisons.
Sure. So would you, I don't know who would answer this question, probably you, Tina. Hi, welcome to the meeting. Okay, so. But has our IEP, have our IEPs like increased exponentially over the past, like, five years?
We've had a.
To such a rate that it.
We've had a, we have had a strong increase in number of students qualified for special education services, which in some of those do include parent, uh, one-on-one aides. And like Jordan mentioned, I think, a huge portion of, significant portion of this is our after-school program at our K8 sites. All of those are staffed with ELOP, with parent educators. And we have a lot of students in our after-school programs. So that, in addition to what Jordan said, with our TK ratios, we have to have additional parent educators with our certificated teacher in the TK classrooms. So I think that does add a different dimension to why you would see a, this increase in the support.
Okay. And how, what's the percentage decrease for IEPs over the last five years? Now, right now, get it, get it, get it.
So right now, this data is sitting at, uh,
I'm totally kidding.
14%. And what we've seen in our district over time, over the last 15 to 20 years is we were approximately 8 to 10% when I first started. And we've slowly increased. And so we're probably around the 12 to 13% across the district of students who qualify with special needs.
Yeah, that's our current snapshot, but like comparatively.
Yeah, it's increasing. It has increased over time.
So I want to add something to this because actually this is great and great question, great report.
I only ask good questions.
Oh, no, yes. So TK and ELOP, I, so I don't know, I haven't dug into the behind the numbers, but those are two new programs that really I think are driving those numbers. And they have specific funding sources for those programs. I just want to point that out. It's, it's, uh, we have, we have actually extra funding to support paras in the classroom for TK. And ELOP is a whole separate funding source that is a restricted funding source to, to, to do that. So those are new initiatives.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Moving on, comments from the public?
Both?
Both?
Please.
Okay.
So it did something on the agenda. The Brown Act of Board shall entertain comments on any item appearing on the posted agenda. As the board discusses agenda items, audience participation is permitted. Generally, the president will ask the board members for their remarks before recognizing requests from the audience. At the president's discussion, agenda items may be considered in other than, I'm sorry, numerical order. The board will respect the rights of the public to express their viewpoints on matters within the board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are defamatory or violate the privacy rights, rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. The board shall not permit any disturbance or willful interruption of board meetings. On the other side, if it's not on the agenda, the Brown Act specifically, government code, section 549, 54.2, provides that no action or discussion shall be taken on any item unless it is adequately described and timed according to the agenda. Accordingly, though the public may comment on matters within the board's jurisdiction that do not appear on the agenda, the board cannot respond to such comments without running the risk of deliberating or initiating discussion on topics not properly before the board. Given the prohibition set forth in the Brown Act and the risk associated with responding to public comments, the board does not respond to community expressions or comments. The board will respect the rights of the public to express their viewpoints on matters within the board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are defamatory or violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. The board will not permit any disturbance or willful interruption of board meetings.
Thank you. And we have items that are on and not on the agenda. First, we'll have items not on the agenda, Savannah Roberts.
Good evening, my name is Savannah Roberts. And I have, I am a senior at UBS City High School right now with a 3.82 GPA. I am here tonight as a student and athlete on the UBS City track team and a dedicated employee of Delish Pizza, where I work at least 20 hours a week. I am working hard to balance my academics, athletic commitments, and my job. My athletic, or my academic journey has not been simple. I am on an IEP for dyslexia. And throughout the years of hard work and determination, I went from being a fourth grader with a first grade reading level to now a senior in the top 12% of her class. I owe a great deal to my parents and resource teachers over the years for always believing in me and teaching me how to advocate for myself. That is why I am here tonight, to advocate for what I need to be successful in my future. My goal is to continue running track at the collegiate level. As you know, the cost of college is a significant financial challenge. My job is not just for spending money. It is essential for me to save up so that I can afford college. This is a financial necessity for my family and me. I am here tonight to respectfully ask an exemption from the district policy, policy, which states that edgenuity is not for first-time instruction. I am also aware that this district has a precedent of granting these exemptions. Over the past two years, I know of at least two other students who were approved to take IM3 on edgenuity for first-time instruction. Furthermore, I know a classmate this year who was approved to take an edgenuity class for first-time instruction for English 12 and government so that she could graduate early. My request is only for one class, for a simple purpose, to make my future goals achievable. This exemption is key to a schedule that allows me to meet those goals. My plan in the spring is to attend pre-period ASB, Honors English, STEM capstone for engineering, APR, and AP precalculus. By taking government on edgenuity this semester, it would free up a critical three hours before track practice for me to work or complete homework. Granting this exemption would be a significant help in launching my future, a future I have been working very hard to build right here at UBS City High. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And then we have comments on agenda item 13F. We're going to start with Delana Hill.
Hello. We would like to express our growing concerns regarding the recent decision to use charter buses to transport students on field trips within our district. As dedicated school bus drivers, we take great pride in the safety, professionalism, and commitment that we bring to transporting students in our community. There are several key issues that we would like to bring to your attention. Student safety and driver accountability. The safety of our students must remain the highest priority. As certified school bus drivers, we personally inspect our vehicle before every trip to ensure that it is in optimal condition. We always carry our credentials, we present them upon request to any authorized individual. We also have had charter buses pass us during trips, during routes, going way over the permitted speed limit, and also in school zones. Who's monitoring this? This leads us to ask, is anyone from the district physically checking the credentials of charter bus drivers prior to student boarding? Our background checks and certifications being verified with the same rigor applied to our district drivers. We raise this concern not just hypothetically. A tragic example underscores the risk. In 1976, a charter bus from Student Transportation Lines Incorporated experienced catastrophic brake failure while traveling at approximately 65 miles an hour, resulting in the death of 28 UBS City High School students, one adult, and injuries to 23 others. This was due to a failed air compressor drive belt and a missed pre-trip inspection, critical safety oversights that could have been prevented. Additionally, the driver involved was unfamiliar with the bus and lacked proper training on emergency procedures. These failures highlight the importance of ongoing rigorous training and maintenance protocols, standards that we as district drivers uphold diligently. Two, driver training and support. Training is essential. Many of us feel the professional development that we need is either unavailable or requires us to come in on our own time. We currently have one certified trainer and one delegate who is still in the process of becoming certified. This places an overwhelming burden on our limited training resources and limits our ability to support new hires effectively. Invest, investing in comprehensive training and increasing the number of qualified trainers would not only improve safety, but also boost morale and retention. Scheduling, staffing, and route management. Another area of concern is scheduling. We'd like to understand why was routing more effective last year compared to this year? What changed in the process? We're now seeing inefficient practices such as buses assigned to transport only one student while another bus with available capacity drives by that exact same location. This raises questions about whether routes were designed for optimal efficiency or simply to reflect inflated usage statistics. Furthermore, staffing issues have created confusion and role overlaps. Bargaining unit positions are being filled by non-bargaining unit members. Non-dispatchers are dispatching, non-drivers are driving, employees are working out of class. And this lack of clarity affects operational efficiency and fairness in job responsibilities.
Thank you, Abraham Henderson.
All right. To continue with financial concerns. Chartering buses is significantly more expensive than using district-owned school buses. In addition to higher trip costs, charter companies often have strict cancellation policies that could lead to unnecessary expenses. Our drivers rely on these extra assignments, not just for professional fulfillment, but also to support our families, reduce opportunities for our drivers. While outsourcing to charter companies affects both morale and livelihoods. Reinforcing the importance of school buses. While charter buses may meet basic inspection requirements, they are not inherently safer than school buses. School buses are significantly specially engineered for student safety, from their high visibility color to structural features like reinforced sides and closely spaced seating. Most, more importantly, school bus drivers receive specialized training tailored to student transportation, which further enhances safety. In conclusion, we share these concerns not in opposition to change, but in defense of student safety, fiscal responsibility, and the value of our trained staff. We respectfully urge the district to evaluate these practices with transparency and to consider involving transportation staff in the future planning discussions. Thank you for your time and attention to these important matters. We are proud to serve our students and are committed to working together to ensure the highest standards for their safety and well-being.
Thank you, Raquel Stevens.
Hello. Mercedes is going to hand out the job description of our supervisor driving trainer. While I read, okay. So what may look like multitasking is actually really switching back and forth between multiple tasks, which reduces our productivity and increases mistakes by up to 50%. This is what is happening in our department currently. What once was a driver trainer supervisor, someone who supervises our training. What once was a driver trainer supervisor, someone who supervises our training, is now a driver trainer and a supervisor. Not only is she responsible for supervising half of our department, but she's responsible for providing classroom and behind-the-wheel training to not only our drivers, but also any new and upcoming drivers. We also have hired a delegated behind-the-wheel trainer that also needs to be trained. As with any and all training, there's a substantial amount of documentation that goes along with that, which takes up a lot of her time. She's also a bargaining unit member, so she drives and does dispatch as well. So what is she to prioritize? Training the department drivers with required training to keep our licenses, because personally I've been a driver for five years and I have not received that. I had to renew last November, and I had to go out on Saturdays on my own to make sure I was proficient, and I don't feel like that's my responsibility. I have a trainer for a reason, but she's not available to me. So training new drivers in the staff of department, being in the office so that we can reach her because she's a supervisor for half of our department. She's... So she drives to cover routes? Does she do the dispatcher's job because our dispatcher is also on the road covering routes? So my question is this: Is the solution really contracting out bargaining unit member work, which will result in our drivers and our district losing more money than they should be, or contracting out another behind-the-wheel trainer so that they can help get our department where it needs to be, which is fully staffed and functional? Currently, we have three trainees that are doing behind-the-wheel training, and starting on Monday, we have four that are starting the pre-trip. The hiring of these people would create a significant positive impact to our department, which should urge you to strongly reconsider using charter buses. The whole reason that we are considering that is because we are short-staffed. We are short-staffed because we have a trainer that doesn't have enough hours in the day to train our current or incoming. So we would prefer to have another trainer that is dedicated to training and to us that are already driving, to not be working on our own time on the weekends, to be proficient for the safety of our students and ourselves. Thank you.
Perfect. So we are approaching our 10-minute limit for public comment. If there's new information from the remaining speakers, and with the permission of the Board, we can allow those three speakers to remain. If not, we would have to move on.
Yep.
Same.
Yeah. All right. Next person, Catalina Marty.
Good night, everybody. I'm Catalina Marty. I'm the senior driver of the Transportation Department for UBS City Unified, 20 years' experience. There are no words to express how I'm feeling being here, being here tonight. Although I stand here in full support of my fellow drivers, I miss the opportunity to be serving the students of our community by transporting them safely to and from San Francisco because 10 days ago, a charter was booked to transport the students. Although the only person scheduled to be off in our department is a mechanic, we have been led to believe that these charter buses are not meant to eliminate our driving of field trips, but to ensure that the students still get the additional education, educational activity and sports-related trips. However, the charter for today's trip is a perfect example as to why we are here tonight and we're sitting here tonight. With great concerns as how chartering trips will affect our department, we were told we cannot afford to lose multiple drivers off our PM routes. This trip would have taken one driver from their PM route after this charter was booked. Their three other drivers were scheduled to take trips that took them off their PM routes as well. One driver called out sick today, and all school-to-home routes were driven. These charters are being booked long before the knowledge of who is present and available is known. Our drivers could have driven all the trips that were scheduled for tonight without having a negative impact in our department. A driver on step five would have paid approximately, would haven't been paid approximately $300 for this trip. The district would have also covered the cost of fuel. I ask, did chartering the bus have a negative financial impact on our district because it had a negative impact on me?
Elena Basset.
Hi. So my name is Elena Basset. I am the CSCA Labor Relations Representative for the UBS City Chapter. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on this critical agenda item, charter buses. I am sure you're shocked. So let me start by acknowledging the shared goal. We... Let me just lower this a little bit. I'm a little short. The shared goal we all have here, to ensure that students get safe, reliable transportation to athletic events, field trips, and extracurricular activities that enrich their education. The district's bus drivers have been the backbone of this for years. They wake up early, navigate challenging routes, and keep our students safe, all while proudly serving the community. These are not just jobs. These are careers built on dedication to students. In the 23-24 school year, the district's transportation plan showed we successfully managed all student needs with the fleet of 59 buses, 25 full-size for home-to-school and 34 mid-size for special ed, covering a combined 653,400 miles annually without a single mention of charter services. The year before that, 22-23, it was the same story. Drivers handled everything in-house, even as we prioritized transportation for low-income and special-mneed students despite tight budgets. So what changed this year to suddenly make external contractors the most efficient and reliable means, as these agreements recitals claim? Is it the shortage of bus drivers that has plagued the district since 2020? If that's the case, why not invest more in the hiring and training programs you've already been promoting? Opportunities for eight-hour and substitute drivers that can keep work in-house? These questions deserve answers through open dialogue, not unilateral decisions. Tonight's contracts would outsource exactly that work. Student transport, uh, student transport, transports for athletics, extracurriculars, and field trips on an as-needed basis through service orders. The agreement cites exemptions under ED Code 39830.1 for charter party carriers. And yes, the law permits school districts to contract out transportation services under ED Code, but here's the crucial part the recitals themselves highlight. These are general services essential to operations, not special services under Government Code. Ooh, I'm out of time. But there are numerous curb cases that I am more than happy to be sharing with you if needed. And yeah.
Mercedes.
Thank you, Mercedes. Gerald, we're representing CSCA. And I talked to you at the last board meeting about Paper One Bus and just how that wasn't communicated. It's kind of being done in a vacuum. We found out by secret, by rumor, so this is not transparent, right? So, and we still have not had that opportunity to sit down with the district to talk about the impacts that this decision that you might be making tonight is going to have. But I know, and Kirsten, I know you like data, right? So I'm here to give you some data, okay? So from the fall of November, well, from November 2020 to November 2022, we hired seven drivers and lost a total of 14, leaving them in just that period a deficit of seven drivers. In 23-24, we hired 12 drivers, but lost eight, so we were only plus four. In 24-25, we hired five, lost two, leaving us a plus three. Also, in 2025, we promoted, well, one of the people that left was promoted to that trainer. You heard about our, one of our drivers was promoted to a driver delegated behind-the-wheel trainer, which is one of our bargaining unit members. However, they have not had an opportunity to get trained, fully trained, and they're in a probation period, so I don't really know what that looks like. If the trainer's supposed to train them to get up to speed but isn't training them, how that looks? In the three years that our current trader, trainer has been here, they have trained 14 drivers, and of those 14, 14 drivers that were hired, seven have left so far, okay? Of the 14 that they trained. She was hired as a transportation supervisor, but when we bargained the driver trainer out of the unit, it was still a driver trainer position. The last person that held that position was a driver trainer, not a transportation supervisor. The purpose of removing that job from the unit was because they have to evaluate drivers, not because they have to supervise the department. So that time's being taken supervising the department. So we currently have, I think it's 31 bus drivers, one delegate behind-the-wheel driver, who are all driving routes, including our, some of our mechanics, our dispatchers, that sort of thing. The director has issued a handbook that was not negotiated that talks about when a driver has a trip, they come in at nine, so they lose hours, they're losing time, they're losing overtime. Drivers by law are allowed to drive up to 10 consecutive hours after at least an eight-hour rest period, and they can work a total of 16 duty hours within that period. So 10 driving with an additional six of other duties or standby and that sort of thing. My question is, is that if we are going to be denying our drivers the overtime, what's going to keep them? What's our retention plan? What's our exit plan to not have to use charter buses? You know, maybe today we need charter buses, but we need that exit plan on how we're not going to use charter buses. And I break that, leave that with you on that.
And with that, would anybody like any agenda re-argumentation on the current agenda?
Yeah, let's take, let's take that separate.
Take that separate, okay. So with the exception of 13F, can I get a motion on the percentage agenda?
I make a motion. We approve. Second.
A motion by Member CCL and a second by Member Lamb. How goes the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or none? Motion varies. 13F, any questions?
Well, I think, I, I'm not sure I have questions as much as I want to, like, make sure, reiterate what was discussed to see if I have my ducks in a row, if I have the The reason for this was not that the drivers couldn't, couldn't perform the special driving, right, the field trips, that we were all in agreement, field trips, not virtual field trips. We wanted actual live field trips. And it wasn't that they couldn't, but in order to successfully execute that task, the, the trips themselves had to be amended so that the driver could come back and cover the regular route, right? Like, there was, there were hours taken out of, we've had students come in saying, well, because we were using, we weren't able to access the first four hours of our conference that we wanted to go to because the driver couldn't do that in the, with, it let us go to the field trip at the time we needed to because they had to also be back and cover the regular route. Do I have that right? Yes.
Yeah, I think that's part of it. I would say that probably the more driving factor was limitation on some of the sports events. Those, you know, that was, definitely drove some of the decision-making there. And I just want to be clear, I mean, we absolutely want to make sure, we'd much prefer to have our drivers that are sitting in the audience right here doing these jobs.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's what we want. That is our desire, that, you know, building up our program, getting more drivers, and, but we're running into some issues where it has been a strain on the department. We have dispatchers driving, mechanics driving, just to get, you know, home-to-school transportation and our required sports events and field trips. And we don't know on any given day when somebody's going to be called out sick or multiple people, and we've had some issues there. So, well, our last resort is charter buses, but in some cases, that's, you know, that's to, to make school operations run. That's what we're, that's what we can have in some cases.
So I, I confess, I read the last contract. I didn't get to the Newman one.
The same contract.
I assumed.
Yeah.
But I didn't see that, how much of a lead time was required, if it was contractual or if it was just like...
It's if they're, so it's just, if they're out of buses, they're out of buses, and if they can find a level of drivers.
So for example, like, I don't know if this is, if this is a number you would have off the top of your head. But what the average, what the average out is on, for our staff of bus drivers, like, how, on a given day, 4% are out sick or on leave or...
Yeah, but I, I don't have that, that they're on, on the, yeah.
Well, I'm just shocked.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, because that, we would hate for, because that would impact safety, would hate for a driver to drag themselves out of bed when they're really, really sick because, you know, they couldn't, like, we want the drivers to take care of themselves. But what is the, my question is, what's the lead time on the charter bus? If I run a scenario where we have obligations to our students, because all of us are in this room for students.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
That is the only reason all of us are here. So, so if the students have a need, right, and if we have the lead-up and we plan it and said, we take it to the dispatchers, we take it to our team, and they say, yeah, we can need it, but then on the day of, they're like, oh my gosh, four people called out with the plague, and now we can't do it. My question is, what's the lead time on a charter bus?
To secure a charter bus.
To secure a charter bus.
So again, this, we don't, we haven't done this a lot, so I'll tell you that it seems to be, you know, two to three weeks, you know, you know, but again, it just depends on the availability, so if somebody...
So it's not something we can do the day of, like, give them, like, all right, you guys said you could do it, and do all the other things too?
No, I mean, once they're rented, they're rented, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I think the thing is, and Tino and Scott have been working on ways to give our, our own drivers to ensure that the, on one given day where we have multiple field trips, multiple athletic events, trying to avoid that. So I think you're asking for a, how many weeks ahead of time to request a...
At least four weeks.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's pretty significant to ask for sites to be putting in four weeks in advance trips in order to make sure. Because what we've had happen is, on a given day, we've had multiple field trips, multiple athletic events, and, and that's part of what, you heard from some of our students, is the cancellation at the last minute or some of the adjustments that have to be made because our first obligation is home-to-school athletics and then required field trips. So we're trying to be as strategic as possible because we do want our drivers to drive when they can, and so we're just trying to be more organized and strategic to try to give us lefty time.
Well, and it was, and it was like a last resort. It wasn't like, it was just a la, supposed to be a last resort. Last resort.
Yeah.
No, no, last meeting, you said that 17 people had applied, were bus drivers, done.
Well, so, I mean, we started, so we had, we have a class going on right now. We started off with 42. We're at 17. I don't know where we are today.
We're below...
It kind of goes down.
Below five?
Yeah.
We have three behind the wheel right now, and four that are starting the pre-trip, and then they'll do behind the wheel after that, so that's seven right there, and she still has more than her getting ready to go test at the CHP. Like, we have a really good class, a really good, that state-of-the-art class that had gone through the process, through the steps. It's a process.
Yeah, so I don't know who's in the training class right now. I mean, I know we've got two training classes and there are different stages of being certified, but, yeah.
But that takes time. There's time there.
Absolutely.
I think we're all in agreement. That's the goal.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Is to maintain our lead force.
Absolutely.
What is, what is the, uh, okay, I'm losing it now in here, so maybe you just substitute one in. Is there any credence to having a designated full-time trainer? Have we looked at that in the HR department to help train and try to, try to get people up to, knowing this is a high turnover job, right? Historically, it's always been high turnover.
So we do have a designated... So we do have a designated trainer, that is, it's a supervisor position, that's the trainer.
I meant designated, like, that's, that's what they do. They don't also drive and also supervise and also dispatch and change tires and?
I think they're also driving, if I understand it correctly.
It's not a full-time job to train?
It is a full-time job, but they're having to also drive because we're so short that they're being put out on the routes as well. So while they could be back doing all the training, they don't have that luxury because we are in desperate need of them actually driving routes.
Right.
Is that not?
Okay, so hold, hold on, this is, um, so there are, the, the department is being strained in different directions. So we will find out, the supervisor trainer is pulled in to do dispatching work, the dispatcher is get, gets pulled into the field. We get some of our mechanics pulled into the field to, to drive buses. So, I mean, the, the driver shortage is affecting every position in the department.
Sure.
Yeah.
So as for this contract is, we're only going to have this contract until we can have a full fleet of bus drivers.
And, and only when we feel like we got some things stacking up that we just can't, you know, what, um, can't handle, we have too many events.
Can't guarantee that they'll happen.
Yeah, I mean, or we just have to limit those events. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's reality.
And then as for this, so say that like happens in like the next like four months, right? Probably a long shot, but it happens in the next four months, and then we have 30 days to handle this.
Oh, we can, this is not, uh, we're not obligated to do anything. This allows us to call charter and say, hey, you know, we're having an impactful day, we're going to need to?
Like having the back pocket.
This is, this, this does this as, as needed. It doesn't mean we're going to spend these dollars, it's, it's when we, when we see a real need to take care of it, yeah.
Any questions?
I move that we approve. Second.
All right, on a motion by member Pretty and a second by member Lamb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries? All right, moving on. Action. A, expulsion, suspended contract.
I make a motion that we go forward as discussed in closed session.
I second the motion.
On a motion by member C O S Iola and a second by member Quilty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries? B, first reading of proposed revisions.
Thank you, servant Ford, the next set of policies for review. This is a first read, we'll come back at the next meeting in November for second read and possible approval. If there are any questions or comments now or in the next few weeks, please let me know.
Any questions now? No more questions?
No, we approve, no, it's not approved, it's a first read.
My bad.
That's okay.
Uh, C, developer fee for law agreements.
So there's a lot in this one, and I tried to give a, give a good overview on the staff report. So essentially, back in December of 2021, the board at that time approved that we move forward with basically a, a deferral of, well, to work with the regional housing to, to mitigate some of the developer fees. And what resulted in that is this agreement that essentially 50% of the developer fees for this project would be part of a, a long-term loan in the form of a 3% interest, but those interest payments really are contingent upon there being fees available for that. So that's, um, the unit has, so the, the project as described here is, what is it, 88 one-bedroom units, 44 two-bedroom units, 133 units altogether. The developer fees are 363,000, the deferred loan part is 181,000. And so we've worked with our attorneys, we've worked with regional housing, I think they're here in the audience. And so at this point, we are asking for board approval for the deferred loan and all the agreements that go along with it for this project. And so if you have some questions, I'll do what I can to answer.
55-year term, good golly. None of us in this room are going to be there.
I agree.
I will.
I believe that.
I'll be there.
You'll be there.
No, you'll be at the White House, whatever. So basically, are they paying it in the, in, like, you pay, you know, 15-year, uh, and you pay your house every month for 15 years, because it's 15-year? Or is this like, you have 55 years to pay it, but you're not really going to pay it?
I can tell you that there's a lien on the property and that there are documentation that says it'll eventually be paid in 55 years, that's what I can tell you.
All I need to know.
Hey Neil, no questions, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve, so, for second.
On a motion by member Bonso and a second by member Pretty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Right, one opposed by member C O S Iola, um, motion carries? Okay, 15, board reports, information. Any board reports? No. I mean, did it add the charters?
Like maybe three charters?
No, no.
No, okay. Any communications from the couple? Comments from employee representatives? No less than others?
Thank you, it's good to be back after a stint with COVID. I apologize for my absence at the last meeting. I would like to share how enjoyable it has been to come and watch our different school sites present about their programs. I've learned over the past several months how many different jobs people do here that I've never even heard about. And I find myself doing one of those jobs as well. There's very few people who know that our discovery school even exists. So I really enjoy the opportunity to sit here and listen to these presentations. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about student behavior and school safety. We have several school sites where our teachers are not feeling safe in their classrooms, where students are making threats against teachers and staff. And just a general overall feeling amongst many of our unit members that their school is not the safest place for them to be at all times. I don't have a solution to this problem, but it is something that I believe needs to be addressed in some ongoing discussions. When student behaviors impact teacher safety and the learning conditions of their classmates, it becomes an issue that we all need to work together to solve. For our students, for our staff, the learning conditions in the classroom and the overall function of our school district. You may have received some communication from some unit members regarding some specific situations that I won't address publicly. That is a drop in the bucket of the concerns right now amongst our staff with the small number of students, but the ever widening display of inappropriate behaviors in the classroom, not limited to threats of gun violence on campus, students putting their hands on staff, and what appears to be a widespread epidemic of substance abuse among our young people, which is causing some unexpected behaviors in the classroom. So I urge us to work together to help meet the needs of these students, but also to maintain safe classroom environments for their classmates and for our teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I want to start with congratulation, congratulating Kim Taylor, she is amazing. I've known her for years, we used to do gates, games at River Valley over the football games and stuff together. We're continuing our work with the job description task force and we all took kind of a big sigh of relief because it felt like maybe we're just one drop away, one drop away. We still have to, you know, do those last little finishing touches, but it really felt good to say, hey, we got some done, right? Not quite ready, there's a lot of little, little extra, what do you call it? managerial pieces that we have to do to before we could bring them to the board. But that's pretty exciting. And I think this was addressed, but we were talking about that increased in, increase in instructional support in that report. One thing to note, that our after-school folks were not bargaining unit members, they were just time-shooted out, well, employees, and now they are part of our bargaining unit work. So that could be part of that increase where there was that big jump because we have all these A-Lot pairs now. And I know you mentioned that, but I just want to explain that they went from an unrepresented group to the regular bargaining unit. And I, I'm not sure, we, we hired a trainer, but they were hired as a supervisor, a transportation supervisor, so we actually have two transportation supervisors in a department. So that's really a dedicated trainer. As you see, I passed out two job descriptions, one for the transportation supervisor, they're stapled together, and one for the driver trainer, and they are different duties. So, you know, we do feel that as hiring that person as a transportation supervisor to do the training duties, they're doing double duty there. I'm not here to advocate for a managerial position doing too much work, but if they're not being able to train our drivers and train, there's, it's not just training the outside drivers, new drivers, but our current drivers need ongoing training that they're supposed to be doing. So that was kind of our comment on the, this difference between a supervisor and a trainer that's supervising the training, or the super driving, the driving and evaluate, not really supervising, but evaluating the driving. So that's the difference there. We do appreciate you listening to us and our concerns and, you know, we all want the same thing, but we want our bargaining unit, our members to be honored with what is in the contract, which is their opportunity to bid routes. These charter buses is like, they're in advance, 10 days. Our drivers don't, don't get to bid a route till five days of trip. So I'm not even sure what that looks like. How do we decide if we're going to be able to do that? If we have to let this people, if these people know so far advanced than what our people get to know? So that's not equitable to our folks. And every time, like Kathy missed a trip today that she was perfectly able to take, there was drivers to cover routes, we will be filing grievances on the contract on that. So just expect that because that's our job to protect our workers. Thank you.
Want some more numbers?
Um, yeah, I just had a question. With regards to, just to clarify, if I am a teacher in a classroom and a student threatens me, let's say, is our process any different than if I'm in, I'm out at, out in the community and somebody threatens me? Like, is, is there, you know, like maybe a teenager and says something that I deem to be a life-threatening statement? Would the options that a teacher have be less than the options that I would have as a community member?
No, so, do you mean in terms of their ability to file a?
Police report?
Yeah, no, they absolutely have the right to do that.
Okay.
And so there would be two systems working in, or like the judicial legal system along with our, our policies regarding threats to our staff.
Yeah, because that's unacceptable. I think we're all agreeing with that.
What, what, what is the procedure then for that teacher? So she's in the classroom with a, with a class full of kids and she's being threatened. What is her, what's the procedure for that teacher?
So they would call to the front office for assistance. And so depending on the age level of the campus, we have campus supervisors that are available. But yes, so reaching out to the front office for assistance immediately.
Okay. Yeah.
Are we, because I think, I don't know, but I suspect that each of us has been contacted fairly recently about some things that are going on on some of our sites. And hearing that a teacher was actually struck, and there didn't seem, at least for this teacher, didn't seem to be any repercussions on the student. So I'm just wondering if we're really following through on discipline. I know that reducing the number of suspensions makes our dashboard look really neat, but it's having a pretty devastating effect on teachers, on the classroom, on the learning experience, on all aspects of being at school. So I just want to make sure that site principals are being supported in dealing out discipline and that we're not letting the need for having less suspensions on our dashboard preclude us from meeting out discipline when it's necessary. Did I say that right? Yes.
Yeah, and I would say Shelley, that, again, and I would, again, we just had this conversation with principals yesterday. I was, we were meeting in Grayville over, and I was at K-5 and K-8. The principals are expressing their same concerns regarding some of the behaviors. As Heather said, it is a small percentage, but the, the, the level of behavior is very extreme right now. And so the principals share those same concerns, but Shelley, I want to assure you that it's not about, I mean, if we need to suspend kids, we're suspending kids. We were just reviewing it, so there is students being suspended. I don't know about this incident about a teacher being struck. If there's one specific, I do know about some of the other ones, but I want to assure the board that we're not tolerating behavior just because of the dashboard. And so if there are concerns, and I know Heather and I had a conversation last week, this week, about the concerns being brought forward by YCTA. And so, again, we're having those conversations. I don't know what the answer will be in terms of these extreme behaviors, but I do want you to know, and Tino and I were just talking about it, kids are being suspended and they should, and they need to, there are consequences for behaviors, there are consequences for the threats against our staff and other students. And so I want to assure the board that that is happening. But if there are specific incidents that we don't know about, then I, I need to know.
You can't do anything if you don't know.
And I do need to know about it. If there's a feeling like, you know, and again, there are circumstances sometimes that aren't always known, but that those are the things that, you know, we can look into. Thank you.
Do we have like a process or a policy, not a policy, but do we have a practice of, like, I mean, I know our SROs for the high schools, but do we have a process of deterrence for like, just having like, ever so often random, like, canine, you know, drug searches?
Yeah.
Do we do that frequently or surprise?
So we, we had, we had that in the past, and we haven't, it's no longer have. We no longer have that contract with the company out of Chico. There were, you know, competing opinions about that regarding whether or not it was beneficial. There were some legal issues that came up over the use of drug-sticking dogs in schools. So that contract was suspended.
Three years ago.
Maybe it's been more than that, I wasn't.
Yeah.
I heard of that.
Never came to the class I wanted them to attend.
I don't know why.
It's like, I know you kind of become a suspect.
I don't know.
Well, it's just concerning that Heather suggested that the drug thing is, is an issue.
It is an issue, and I think that there is just, and I'm going to, I use this as an example. You know, back in the day for us, it was cigarettes and you didn't smoke and it was just, you know, you didn't. And now it's, it's, you know, vape pens and those things, and it's, the kids, my impression is it's very, they're very casual about it. And so it's just one of those things that we're trying to address through trying to educate kids to the dangers of vaping, so.
I know vape pens have caused a lot of plumbing problems.
Yes, they have, they have it, yes. Our custodians and our maintenance crew have found quite a few things in the pipes of our spools. So I do want to assure the board that it is taken seriously. If there are specific issues, I'm happy to have a conversation, Tino, Justin. But it, it will not be tolerated on our campuses.
Is there some, I don't know if this is the right term, but something I wished we had done when I was working at the schools, and you have a student who comes into the office and he's been sent out from a teacher and he's in the office to regroup, to calm down because he needed to be out of there. And then we let the bell ring at second period and we send him off to their next class. I wish we could notify the teacher of?
I wish we could notify the teacher of the next class, just FYI, this person.
This kid's been triggered.
He's been triggered today, just maybe to, to help that the student doesn't go into the next class and blow up again.
Yeah.
I wish we could do something like that.
Well, and I think the thing about it, and the board is supporting this, we have a, we have a large number of staff for social emotional purposes, so you have a contingency of counselors and social workers.
Right.
School psychologists on the campus, their role is to help with de-escalation of these students.
Right.
And to help these students work through whatever's triggering them.
Right.
And so, and, um, I think that happens, but I think that that might be something that's, how do you help the next, because, you know, our, and again, I would prefer that students who are so agitated not be sent on to the next class.
No, a hundred percent, but they, but they, but they are. Yeah, I mean, when I was working, they were, and it's just like, let's notify that teacher that maybe this person was having kind of a bad day last period, just FYI, so that they maybe don't, you know, trigger them again.
Exacerbate it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, I feel like we're helping the student and the teacher at that point by notifying them.
When, when Rafa was here talking, one of his, um, teachers that he celebrated was in the, in that.
Reset room.
Yes, it's like a reset room now, and that would be wonderful if schools could have that, I mean, it sounded like she's doing a wonderful job, and they even come in and visit with their, you know, during recesses.
All of our schools have a reset room.
I think there's a woman now, right?
No.
No, they don't.
AK River Valley, and great.
I would like a reset room in my house, please.
For herself?
Yes, just with books on it.
That would be good if all the schools could have a reset room. That would really be a great addition. Rather than send them to the office.
Perfect, um, comments from Tino?
Yeah, I just want to call attention to, uh, the board. There is, was a request by the Habitat for Humanity to addendize an item, it is about a project that they are, um, involved in, the Merriman Village Apartments, and are requesting that the board consider an agenda, and decided to be based on agenda for, again, it's about developer fees, allowing the fees to be delayed or reducing the overall fee, so requested that Habitat put this in writing, asked what the request is, and so, uh, pleasure of the board whether or not to agendize that.
I'd say I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah.
So, have their attorney the next one, and that's on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next board meeting is November eighteenth, uh, open sentence at seven, can I get a motion or a letter?
So moved.
Second. A motion by member Ciucio La, second by member Lam, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I have a rolling aye. I oppose.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Each week, local governments and schools make important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts on our community and quite possibly on you. YUBASUTTER.live makes it easier for you to know what's going on. We livestream up to four local government meetings every Tuesday, important special meetings, Oliver's Public Utility District's Monday and Thursday meetings, and town halls. To make it easier for you, we pull out informative sections and present them individually. For your information, our new series that posts Wednesdays right here on YUBASUTTER.live, subscribe to our YouTube channel, like and follow our Facebook page so you know when we're live and when we posted something new. For your information, local government meetings made shorter, posting Wednesdays here on YUBASUTTER.live.